Good morning. It's 10 o'clock and I'm just waiting to confirm quorum so we can call this committee the whole meeting to order. I do see four members in the chamber and two online, so we have indeed a quorum and I'll call the meeting to order. So the first item of business is council announcements. Any members of committee have announcements to make? I see Regional Councilor Chan and Counselor Tree, you go first.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I have announcement here. Last Friday, I host my second economic development meetings. Majority of these entrepreneurs coming from workforce, so my intention is trying to give the updates regarding the OPAs and also trying to get connection with local business, especially for BA areas. And I hope this meeting can give more information from cities who are attracted you. Also, I want to hear more information from businesses as well. So it was done last week and hopefully in next half year, we have similar ones. I give you more information about adding to our business development and also our OP progress as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Regional Counselor Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. First meeting in October. I, two things, well, three things actually. One is that on Saturday, I just want to say thank you to all the volunteers who helped out with the celebration of Mid-Autumn Festival. Five hundred people came to enjoy and watch cultural performances, enjoy mingling with police officer and myself and other people who were there. And so everybody had fun. And the second thing is that also have the occasion to accompany Minister Pauser, who invite me to the, what they call Kids Festival. And it's great to have an opportunity to talk to vendors and also the kind of service providers to serve the children. And at the time, as I was saying in the past, and actually I was saying that I would like in the future have an opportunity working with the Persian Committee as well as all interest parties. We have a CTY Children's Festival. So you hear here first. And talking about the Persian Community, I went back to the grounds just around the loop of Central Library on October 1st. Because you all will recall, only a year ago, about fifty to eighty thousand UN Canadians were gathered there for a rally to mourn the passing of Marsha Gina Amini and call for women, life and freedom. And I was there, but the grounds, as expected, empty. I, for one, I'm sure all of us on council continue to stand in solidarity with the community, calling for freedom and democracy and equality for women for all. And then I was talking about expected. Unexpectedly, I walk up the hills and then I realized that my colleague, Regional Counselor George Paulette, actually had a ceremony there. So I want to say thank you for also recognizing the anniversary of the massive rally that really put the call of women, life and freedom. So thank you very much for all the support. And I think as a council, we want to, if I may say so, on the race of history. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to also give a shout out to Jay Shay and Sarah Loretta Schuster for all of the great work that they did during our Truth and Reconciliation Day on the 30th of September on Saturday. We had a great turnout. The speakers that were there were excellent. They were, I mean, so many of the aspects of what has happened in our past with regard to the indigenous population were touched upon and the challenges that the indigenous population still is facing today. And I really believe that the, I could tell in the audience that the people that were there were really there to listen and learn and having conversations with a number of residents of Richmond Hill after the event. Eyes were open and opened wider as to, you know, the challenges that we as a country face with achieving reconciliation definitely happened at that event. And I really want to give a shout out to both the, all of the organizers and all of the folks that came out to that event, but also to all of the citizens that made the time to come out to it and, you know, do their part in learning about what we need to do to move forward. So thank you again to those folks and I look forward to, you know, to using that knowledge collectively in our community to make us get closer to the goal of reconciliation.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, you have something else to add?
Yeah, sorry, we missed, if I don't mention, in addition to five hundred plus people, I really want to say thank you for Counselor Cherry and Counselor Shu who was there personally, as well as Mayor West and Counselor Civiles let me know in advance they could not be there. I think that they should be mentioned, participate one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other requests for announcements. I have one small announcement. I'd like to do a shout out, a congratulation to the Richmond Hill Markham and Vaughan Chinese Business Association, who held their 30th annual dinner event. It was very successful and one of many mid-autumn festival celebrations across Richmond Hill. And it was well attended and very well received by those who attended. So the next item we have on our agenda is the introduction of emergency or time-sensitive matters. Does any member of committee have a time-sensitive matter? Okay, I see none. Then we'll move to a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you from Counselor Silivitz. Any discussion on the agenda? Discussion? Okay, no, yep. So we're just adopting the agenda as presented. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, now disclosures of pecuniary interest. Any members of committee have a pecuniary interest? I see none. Okay. And now we get to identification of items requiring separate discussion. Counselor Tree, did you want to pull one of the items? Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just want to put the section fifteen, eleven point, God, please win. This age, eleven point four, thank you. Yeah, eleven point four.
Okay, eleven point four, Mr. Clerk. And Deputy Mayor Chan?
Actually, having moved for a motion to bring in age-friendly community strategy back in 2019, I was about to pull eleven point four, but I'm glad it's been pulled.
Okay. Anyone else want eleven point four pulled? Counselor Davidson? Yeah, very good. By virtue of the presentation, we will be discussing that item? No. Very good. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I require a motion then to adopt the remainder of the items, which would be eleven point one, eleven point two, eleven point three, eleven point five, eleven, eleven point five and eleven point seven. Someone willing to move that? Thank you, Regional Counselor Chan. Any discussion on adopting those remaining items? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay. So we have no public hearings. We move into our presentations. We just have one presentation today. And this is really great, an update on the, you know, the great work that's being done in our urban forest management. We've got Ruth Rendon, our Manager of Sustainability, and Diana Sherman, our Natural Environment Coordinator, who are going to present to us a progress update. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. Thank you for having us here today. As part of the Sustainability Section Commitment to Keep Council and Resident Informed on the City's Sustainability Initiatives, we are here to provide you with a progress update on the work the Urban Forest Working Group has undertaken to implement the actions of the Urban Forest Management Plan. I would like to introduce you to Diana Sherman, our Natural Environment Coordinator, who is managing this work. She will provide you with a presentation on the key highlights. After the presentation, we could have Q and A's. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair, Mayor and members of council. This morning's presentation is meant to highlight the accomplishments of the Urban Forest Management Plan since council approval in June of 2020. Next slide. So just first to ensure everyone's on the same page, the urban forest includes all trees and shrubs and their growing environments on public and private lands throughout the city, including on streets, parks and woodlands. And the urban forest is a vital component of the city's urban structure and offers many important ecological goods and services. Next slide. Some of these services include carbon storage and sequestration, air pollution removal and oxygen production, shading and cooling and reducing the urban heat island effects, hydrological benefits such as absorbing and filtering rainwater and improving water quality. As the urban forest also provides passive recreational benefits and provides overall physical and emotional wellbeing for the community. And these services are influenced by the urban forest structural elements such as canopy cover, species composition, size and overall health of the urban forest. Next slide. To help protect and enhance these services as well as the overall urban forest, the city has an Urban Forest Management Plan that was approved by council in 2020. And this plan helps to guide management enhancements and protection of the urban forest. The UFMP builds on the city's already strong foundation of urban forest management and assists the city in prioritizing opportunities for improvement as well as optimizing resources. The Urban Forest Management Plan has four goals. The first is to build knowledge to help us better understand the urban forest and make informed and strategic decisions. The second goal is to plan and protect, and this focuses on making sure the city strategically plans for all aspects of trees and their growing conditions to maintain a suitable environment for trees in the urban forest. The third goal is to strengthen resilience, which focuses on increasing species diversity and supporting growth of mature, healthy trees. And the fourth goal is focused on growing partnerships, which recognizes that it takes a community to steward the land and protect the urban forest. And we need to build relationships to continue to empower residents and the community to care for the urban forest. Next slide. So some of the key accomplishments city staff have had between 2020 and 2022 include updating the city's official plan to increase the city's canopy cover targets. And through this process, we recommitted to assessing the urban forest every 10 years. Staff have undertaken research to inform a phased increase to the tariff of fees by law. And this will help to achieve full cost recovery and will allow the city to fund canopy cover enhancements. Staff have also incorporated planting and protection plans into the standards and specifications manuals. And this will help to improve and streamline practices in the development and city capital planning processes. For the past three years, the city has been recognized as a tree city of the world. And operational staff continue to deliver on the community stewardship program and healthy yards programs. And we've planted close to twenty eight thousand trees and sold over thirteen thousand tree shrubs and wildflowers through these programs. Staff continue to address invasive species such as spongy moth by removing egg masses, treating high-value trees. And we've created a video series for residents on how they can protect their trees from spongy moth. And lastly, in partnership with York Region, we completed the Urban Forest Study and Canopy Cover Assessment. Next slide. The Urban Forest Study is completed every 10 years and assesses condition and state of the forest. And this study helps us to identify opportunities and improvements and better understand the condition of the urban forest, which in return allows us to better manage it. Since 2012, canopy cover has increased by 5% and it's now at approximately 30%. The urban forest is relatively homogeneous, which means it's not very diverse and it may be more vulnerable to pest outbreaks. There are close to three million trees in Richmond Hill. Seventy-five percent of those are considered to be in excellent or good condition. However, over 70% are considered small, meaning that they are less than 15 centimeters in diameter. On a positive note, though, we did see an increase in the number of medium and large trees in the past 10 years. And maintaining and protecting trees to grow large is important because they do, larger trees provide greater environmental, social and economic services. From a climate vulnerability perspective, 12 of the city's 20 most abundant trees are considered highly or extremely vulnerable to climate change, including the five most abundant trees, which make over 50% of the urban forest tree population. Next slide. So while the city has made progress toward growing our urban canopy, there are areas where we need to continue to address. And these include establishing a more diverse urban forest, protecting and enabling trees to mature, managing invasive species and conserving and enhancing our natural assets. So the data and recommendations from the Urban Forest Study will be used to improve the city's practices to ensure the continued overall health of the urban forest. A few of the items that will aid us in overcoming these challenges include a natural inventory that is set to begin next year. And this data will be used to inform a natural heritage strategy as well as an invasive species management plan. And there are also a number of smaller actions that staff continue to work on that will help to improve the city's management of the urban forest and help it grow more resilient. Next slide. So this brings us to the end of the presentation and Ruth and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Sherman. And then thank you to Ms. Rendon and Ms. Flores for overseeing this study. It's very helpful, very useful to know where we stand and where we're going. So I'll open up to members of council here for questions and I, my preference is just to have a motion on the floor. I'll go to Counselor Thompson, who's had his hand up.
Certainly, I would like to move to receive the presentation with thanks and direct comments back. In that regard, I would like to just ask a quick question of staff. On slide six, you were talking about the vulnerability of the types of trees that we have. I believe you were saying over fifty, they represent over 50%, the 12 of the 20 types of species that we had there. I'm just curious, will this prompt a change in the types of trees that we will be planting moving forward on city properties? That's my question.
Thank you. Sorry, counselor through the chair to Counselor Thompson. We will be assessing, we have a tree species list that we do use for planting and we will be assessing all of the species on that list and trying to add more, less vulnerable species to that list.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are, those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. And I'll vote Counselor Davidson, who initially said she wanted to pull this and speak to this. Apologies, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentation. I have a question about, and maybe this isn't your wheelhouse, but when we allow a development to come and they plow down every tree and then they have to plant six others, is there a way for us to actually ensure that those older trees are actually saved? I feel like a few saplings doesn't make up for the massive oak tree that's been there for 200 years. Is there a way for us to do more to save those, those trees? And well, I'll let you answer first.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to mention that it is a different department that does the review of the natural heritage. However, with my past experience working in a similar capacity through the development review process, through the environmental planning, parks planning review that's done, there is an opportunity to request that mature trees do get retained on site if the development permits. There's an evaluation that happens. It's typically a, here, a natural heritage evaluation depending on the landscape, whether it's in the Oakridges, Marin or outside. So that natural heritage evaluation provides, and a tree inventory. So it depends on whether it's a feature, natural heritage woodlot versus a single individual tree. So the Tree Preservation, Tree Protection Plan would provide that evaluation of the significance of the tree that gets done through that review process. So yes, staff do take a look at that and review it and make a decision accordingly, accordingly. Yes.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I've actually been reading quite a bit about how cities are trying to, I call it reforest, but I think it's called afforest, where cities, Liverpool's Ismaila in Turkey, Seoul, New York, they're trying to incorporate green everywhere because they find it increases biodiversity. Even if there was a patch of green as big as the seating in this room, it actually makes a difference, including mitigating climate change, air pollution. And other cities are proactively getting rid of, putting green where it never used to be. Even things like a wall, a wall on a bridge is now got green. Is that anything that we can think about in future is not just stopping, tearing down the trees we have, but think of reforestation in areas that aren't typically forest or green spaces, popping green spaces everywhere we can think? Is that something that we could consider?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, definitely. That's one of the items that we will be considering. And we always consider within our natural heritage planning regardless, even when we're doing development review. We're looking at parks, we're always looking at ways to naturalize spaces and make them more viable to biodiversity. So through the future studies that we're doing, that Diana mentioned, the natural heritage study, we're looking at the strategy that will basically look at areas that are, say, open space that are just grass and sod. How could we make those and look at opportunities to create pollinator gardens? Look at green space to create open space. We're looking at ways to actually also include indigenous medicinal plants as well as part of our work. So yes, there's definitely opportunity to look at different ways. I do want to say through our sustainability development review process as well, we also look at how developers could also increase their green space through potential of green moves, pollinator gardens, urban farming as well through that process. So through our different studies, we have the SEEP as well. We're looking at different ways, definitely, to look at opportunities to increase the green space and open space within the city. Yes.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. That's great. I know that we need to do studies and things, but really I feel like we could try to say, take the skateboard park in Oakridges and make the side that isn't being used by kids, something green, moss, flowers, a vertical garden. Like I really encourage you to come with ideas in the short term because we really can green things, I think, pretty quickly. And I'm, I'd be, I'm behind that. And I hope we can also not make it such a choice for developers, whether they want to mow down trees, but incorporate it as a mandatory part of development that we keep green spaces in the new communities. Who wants to live in a concrete jungle? Nobody. And it helps the whole city to not do that. So you wanted, sorry, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Ruth was talking about. There are actually some concrete examples where we are incorporating the more green infrastructure into our parks. So Minthorm Park is going through the revitalization process right now. And through that, the city's putting in rain gardens as well as no-mow naturalization areas. And the Bayview Master Planning Park is actually going to include other no-mow naturalization areas as well. So through the park planning process and through the infrastructure delivery services process, we are incorporating more green infrastructure into existing park planning.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. That's great to hear. And I would also give a shout out that I think there are many residents in Richmond Hill that would be more than happy to be part of that and even, you know, go prune or go help with it in some way. I can guarantee you, I know people would be willing to pitch in. It wouldn't all have to be staff and it wouldn't all have to be on the clock. So thank you for this presentation and I really look forward to the next part of this term doing everything we can to keep the green and re-green Richmond Hill. So thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor. Next is Counselor Silivitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. Just a couple of things. Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may, to staff, the, the 40% of our tree canopy that was basically removed because of the Emerald Ash Bora, is that, is the result of that the overall percentage of smaller trees that we're seeing in, in the municipality? Was, was that the cause?
That it contributes to it for sure. However, I didn't include in my presentation, but the top three's most abundant species are eastern white cedar, buckthorn, and then I believe it's eastern white pine. So white cedar is generally a smaller tree species. It's usually planted as hedgerow, so that's one of the reasons why we have so many small trees, but is also partly due to replanting as a result of Emerald Ash Bora. But on a positive note, that's also why we've seen an increase in the canopy cover is because the city has planted so many trees to replace the ash that were lost.
Thank you very much. I just wanted that confirmed. And thank you for the presentation, by the way. It was lovely. In the spirit of growing our tree canopy, I would just like to bring to natural heritage staff's attention through this meeting that I noticed driving along May Avenue a couple of days ago, and I don't know why it's never occurred to me before, between Young and Cursey Crescent, there are no Boulevard City Trees. None. I don't know why. I guess maybe there is a reason. I don't know why. But I would appreciate it if natural heritage could take a look at this, please. And I think we could plant a few hundred trees just in that stretch on both sides of May between Young and Cursey. So this is a, this was just a really great opportunity to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Mayor West.
Thanks very much. This is, this is a very exciting staff report and it's a great presentation. I think one of the things that I see about this is this is very much of a big picture thing. I mean, when we're talking about urban forest canopy, we're talking not about individual trees, but the, the picture as a whole. And, and I think that that's something important that I'm trying to keep in mind as I'm looking at this. I mean, obviously, individual trees are a part of this, but they're, we're looking at, at doing the things that we need to do in the places that we can do it. And I can tell you, I've been on this council long enough now to know that every year, you know, I go to these tree planting events and, you know, they don't look like much when you're finished the tree planting event, but, you know, the ones that I did early in my council career are now actually little forests. And, you know, and I really think that we do a very good job in Richmond Hill at this. And I think the one thing we need to do is, is tell the story as best as we can because there are so many individual initiatives that we take that I think the narrative needs to be linked together to help people understand that, you know, we really are serious about doing the best that we can. Yes, we lose some trees, you know, periodically. And, you know, that, that's not to be dismissed. But I think that the, the bigger picture story is that we are having net gains in our urban forestry. I also think we've made really great progress on the not mowing areas, allowing areas to naturalize. I know through the mayor's monarch pledge, which we signed a number of years ago, I mean, it's about monarch butterflies, but it's about so much more. And the progress that we've made on, on allowing areas that were once all mowed. on on allowing areas that were once all mowed, you know, to, you know, uniform length of the uniform species in that grassy area is now all of a sudden a much, much richer biodiverse area than it was before. And I think that's great. One of the things that I'm very interested in hearing more about in the future as we progress on this is invasive species. I truly believe that it is one of the biggest threats that we have right now. And the ones that, you know, we think of is spongy moth, which was very gross and inconvenient and all that stuff. And the the Emerald Ash Borer, which was very much a financial issue. I mean, we lost thousands and thousands of beautiful ash trees, which are native species that were that were, you know, the crowning jewel of a lot of our urban forests. And now we're scrambling to redo that. And I know the the street that I live on during the ice storm, we lost a bunch of ash trees and the Emerald Ash Borer contributed to that significantly. But the reforestation that we've done, those trees are now starting to grow and 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 it's it's a much, it's not all uniform like it used to be where they're all ash trees all in a row. It's a much richer and biodiverse landscape. You know, trees are different shapes, different sizes, different textures. At this time of year, they all turn at different times of the year. It really is quite lovely. But there's lots of other invasive species that I think are really causing a threat to our environment, a lot of them that we see, but a lot of them that we don't see. And when you walk through some of the forests, like, say, around the Mill Pond where I live, if you look carefully, you'll notice that a lot of the species in that forest are not native. And, you know, European buckthorn is one. You see it everywhere. In fact, it's so ubiquitous that you think it's native, but it's not. And it's out competing the native species and it's not helping with our overall health of the environment. And I think that's very important. The one last thing I'd like to say is that I really think we need to be working hard on educating people to have a much richer understanding of what a healthy, diverse and beautiful natural environment really looks like. I know that we're going through our front yard, or sorry, our property standards by law review right now. And I think we need to help people to have a greater understanding of native gardens don't look as neat and tidy and in fitting with kind of this natural idea that we have of beauty. But in fact, they really can be done well. They take a bit more effort, but and I would like to see a category in our front yard garden recognition program that rewards people that are doing a really good job on native plantings. And I think that's important because the more people understand that our, you know, our one vision of what's beautiful isn't necessarily the only vision of what's beautiful. I think we'll start to make further progress on understanding what a healthy environment really looks like as opposed to a monoculture. Anyway, I think that's it. I could go on for hours about this, but I know I've used up my five minutes. So thank you.
Okay. Have a second round if you choose. Okay, I have one more speaker on my list, councillor Treaty.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Sir, Mr. Chair, and to our staff. Thank you so much for preparing this document. It's very great to see our strategy, especially for environment protection. From my local or local perspective, I do have two concerns. I want some concerns is comments. First one regarding the region, the street, you might heard the real estate, no, the estate street. So for the region, the street, we have a lot of history and beautiful trees and bushes over there. In the past few months, I was there with our commissioner's support, also Diego, also Amaran from staff perspective, we walk on the streets and they are allowed to obviously, different diseases impacting our maple trees. You can see we're planting lots of new trees as well. Also, some bushes been there for many, many years. So there are kind of a problem for communities as well. So from here, I just want to echo my concerns on behalf of the resident living on the area and seeing that region street, we need to pay more attention. Definitely, I'm going to work with all the planning department, no, the forest department, also our commissioner to work as a strategic alliance to look at all the trees, bushes in that area. So thank you so much. That's my first comment. Also, my commitment to to give the residents of the city an voice and saying we are caring about that area. We're going to work with city and also rising to put together, working on that area. The second comment here is I went to Pioneer Park, also the upper Mill Pond Park as well. With residents, we're visiting a lot of trees, bushes, trees, et cetera. One concern from that one is the involvement of community. From a city's perspective, we have really less resources, right? Especially if there are any invasive species, we don't gather it off. Or is there any water, water pass jamming over there might causing the flooding? In this case, I was saying, we do have a city have a community involvement program. So here I want to echo and give our residents a heads up. If you have any interest in to support the forest, the trees, the parks, please let me know. I'm going to get you in touch and join this community involved in the program. This way, not only cities helping build up multiple, beautiful environment, also the residents live nearby can also contribute. I know there are a lot of debate regarding to the safety because insurance, if you cut the trees, you cut bushes, might lead injury, right? So be careful when you do some things without city support. So best way, let's work together, let's get trained, let's prepare, and then we'll work together. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And Regional Councillor Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for your presentation and the report. And in terms of common report, I like it. Highlight, bang, 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 bang. So it's very clear. I want to give compliment as well as, you know, my course, I would say all the, all the, all the right things. And thank you for the work. We are not being called the true city for nothing. I mean, I'm sure the number of million trees will keep increasing. I think we're still working Evergreen and Tree Canada, some of them. I can't remember how many times I've gone to those committee planning. But one thing I did notice that it need maintenance. It's nice to plant, you know, a thousand trees, but sometimes I walk back to the path that we planted. I wish more have survived. So that's just one aspect, but not to take away. Certainly, all the good work the team has been doing. One thing I did notice, and probably going to be next topic, we'll be talking about some other matter. This would have to be done not in isolation, in partnership with York Region. So I see the nodding, so I take it this is something that will be conscious with our neighboring municipalities as well, region wide, as a region. Also, as you all know, a plan for maintaining our civil and woodlot and all that. Thank you very much, the chair. Good job. Yeah, I like the page one report of the staff report, all the highlights right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from councillor Thompson to to receive the management plan progress update, the attached management plan progress tracker and the urban forest study fact sheet. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, the only remaining item that was pulled out by a couple councillors, so we'll start with councillor Treaty on eleven point four.
Okay, Mr. Chair, do you mind if I extract another section as well? Eleven point seven, is it possible?
We've already passed the staff recommendations in item eleven point seven. It's already been. Yeah, this is the benefit of committee, the whole structure, you know, at council, you will have another opportunity.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Let me comment on eleven point four then, for the age committees strategies here. As I reviewed a lot of materials, first, thank you so much for all the age friendly community strategies. Also, our consultants, also our staff, they put a lot of efforts here to talk with different senior groups and put a lot of comments here. I just do have one one. We look at all the pillars. I think there are ten pillars, but I want to add one, which is the financial support. I think last week I asked my city managers, we do have a lot of sponsorship costs for discount and for other support as well. And as one could echo here is, I've been engaged by many senior groups. So while the complaint as normal comment is the chargers. As I mentioned, there are other cities, they don't charge or charge very less. And our city, we still charge a lot. And I joined their program, everybody treat five dollars, ten dollars, based on only for the fee of the rental plus food and others, it might cost more. Remember, a lot of seniors already retired, so you do have very limited income, but they want to join the community events. So from my perspective regarding to our age friendly community strategies, I want comment here is any way we can put another fit of pillars or some amendment or some thought from a financial perspective. We do have accessibility is great, right? So every access doesn't matter for tools, transportation, equipment. But financially, we do have discounts. Is there any way you can stress in here, just make this accessibility, friendly community more financially affordable? That's my feedback back to our committee to consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, Regional Councillor Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really excited. So I'm going to move the motion. Yeah, if that's what you need, Mr. Chair, I saw you. I I have to say, I'm very excited. I'm proud of the fact that I moved the motion back in the senior's month, June twenty nineteen, to request council then of last term to initiate the looking at the feasibility of having a age friendly community strategy in this particular great community and also to implement establish a, and a particular advisory committee comprised of no one, seniors from the community. I'm glad we have been doing this and a long time coming. So I'm very glad to move the motion, recommendation A B. And thank you, councillor Treaty, for letting me do that. And I have to say that not only the age friendly community council has been established, but has been active in the last nine months. We actually met three times. And I saw the director was nodding and a lot of credit go to you and also our manager Karen Ash, of course, if our consultant. And talking about that, I was hoping there might be a presentation, but I know it's extra work, but maybe someone can see it for next week at council to also raise not only awareness among my council colleagues, but the committee as well. And very specifically, it has been a process gone through going with the community consultation, what we have heard, and also looking at what the potential barriers. I think councillor Treaty may be mentioned about some of the perceived things that the city can improve upon. I'm glad to see in the report, if you read it, that fifteen pages, from page thirty to page forty-four, talk about actions. And this is good. We're not just say, oh, this is nice vision, nice statement, but actually focus on action. Fifteen pages of action. Thank you. And this is collectively the work of the staff, community, as well as the age friendly committee council. And Mayor West, thank you. I have been participating in all three council meeting this this year so far. Specifically, that I just want to highlight a couple of things I I think really makes a difference is even on last Friday, the last council meeting, age friendly community council, it talked about how to break through the social isolation. And some of the ideas which is captured in this report is great, by having a seniors coffee chat and and maybe contrary to his public belief, or maybe, I don't know if it's true or not, but lots of seniors, based on what what we have encountered, they are very, very actually intellect savvy. They commit, well, partly because of, I guess, because of the COVID, people stay at home. So those are things to be planned for, actually having opportunity for intergenerational thing. One point that I did noted that it talked about a diversity program, recreational programs, I believe, part of the country was mentioned. I only see outdoor tai chi. I'm proper Poland. And I would like to see a champion more outdoor exercise for, not just for older adults, for all ages. And in the revitalized Hamilton Park, where there are outdoor exercises, whenever I go there, I always see people, all ages, including children, who try to master those things. So I hope that is the something we still strive on. I understand the report now being released and the committee also have an opportunity to respond to. And the last point I would like to note, and in particular, if you look at appendix, not appendix, page page forty-five, collective accountability, which including York Region. Is actually timing is excellent. Within twenty-four hours, York Region, I saw the commissioner noting, she knows, York Region will be holding a special council meeting to look at how region as a whole would do better to support seniors between now and twenty twenty-seven. So hopefully, if I do hear something new, maybe a council meeting next week, I'd like to share with everyone here. Oh, it's actually, we have mayor and also Mr. Chair also on the region. So I'm very happy. I'm very excited. Let's do it collectively and make Richmond Hill a truly welcoming, accessible community that helps active older adults and senior for a really I would say, for good mental health, for physical health, and some place that we would like to call home. That's all we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Chair, I did move the motion A and B on the H one report.
Okay, thank you, councillors. Thank you for that motion to receive. Councillor Silivitz, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff for presenting at the Accessibility Advisory Committee last week. Thank you to Director Donald Hearn and Manager Karen Ash, who presented. The committee found the presentation enthralling. And there can be no doubt that age friendly strategies are empirically connected to accessibility. So I look forward to the two committees working closely together over the next while. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Next speaker is councillor Davidson.
Thank you. And thank you for this report through you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions I hope staff can answer. One is the the remarks about having complete street concepts. I do we still, can we still make those plans in areas like high tech where it feels like the EMZO is dictating what we have there is complete street still within our power in all areas of Richmond Hill to create these? If I'm assuming that's including the fifteen minute walkable communities, is that is that part of it? And is that still in our in our purview and our ability to create those communities?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we do have, we do have some abilities to impact development throughout the city. Obviously, I'm thinking specifically of the Richmond Hill Center. Those applications will be circulated to us and we will be able to comment on them. How much exact influence will have with respect to the province? I don't know at this time. We haven't really had an application come through, but certainly they are, they have advised that they are willing to work with us with respect to design, such as complete communities and street escapes, et cetera.
Thank you. Another question I have through you, Mr. Chair, is it feels like in COVID, trails and back trails and neighborhood trails were cleared and then signs sort of appeared, I'm going to guess, and say twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. It said these areas are no longer maintained. Through you, Mr. Chair, is that something where we talk about clearing sidewalks, but also areas where seniors and folks during the day like to access green spaces in the wintertime? Is that something we can get back to, is clearing some of those those back areas?
Mr. Steel?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So there is an outstanding council direction for staff to investigate this. And we will be coming forward with a report through the upcoming operating budget process.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, some of the things I hear from seniors all the time involves bylaw enforcement and part of a friendly community, I think. And I look forward to, I know we're working on bylaws. But three, I guess my question is, are we in are we including sort of senior views on bylaw enforcement? They, that is definitely the thing I hear about the most from seniors. And I guess I'm just hoping that we we have seniors in mind as we as we look at bylaw reviews. And it's a general frustration. Let me let me put it that way.
Through you, Mr. Chair, great comment. So I'll take this moment to do a plug for the property standards by law survey that we have out right now. And maybe we, it's a good idea to actually take some of those questions to the Age Friendly Community Council and make sure that their ideas are incorporated.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, my last question is, you know, talking about partnerships, my colleague mentioning Tai Chi, I I completely agree. And I think all of us as councillors, or I can only speak for myself, but I would encourage staff to, if they need help, reaching out to community groups that do these kinds of things, that the councillors may be helpful in connecting the two and maybe initiating some of these community things that they do anyway. I know I walk by and see this majestic movement and I'm kind of like, I'm a clot. I don't want to go and 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 push myself on them. But if I was invited, I would definitely go. So I really like the part about including partnerships with residents and I really see how that would work. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tree, you want to speak again?
I'll just echo councillor Davidson's suggestion, Tai Chi. So in my community, in Westbrook areas, we do have group seniors and we do have a coach there around seventy, eighty years old. So they do around thirty members to practice Tai Chi. I rented a schoolroom because use my own money, not from any of my own pocket. Rented a school there, see your plan. If any seniors around that area, Westbrook, you're welcome to join that. It's in this gymnastic. So we have around thirty members, seniors there, start practice. So winter comes, you're everybody welcome to. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, councillor. And I think that exhausts our speakers. I just want to extend my thanks to Commissioner Steele and Director Hearn and all those responsible for bringing in this this strategy for an age friendly community in Richmond Hill. It was discussed twenty, twenty-five years ago that we were going to become, you know, a rapidly aging community. And now we're seeing it take place in twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. We went from fourteen percent over sixty-five to now twenty-two percent over sixty-five. That that trend is continuing, that rate of growth among the plus sixty-five will will be even higher when they do the next round of census. So it's so important for us to plan this way. There's there's such great strategies and 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 options to make Richmond Hill a great place for seniors. So I I want to, I want to thank all those who contributed to this report and very happy to support it. All all in favor of the motion on the floor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, I think we can say. And that that concludes our regular business. Now, we don't have anything scheduled for closed session. So unless there's other business by any members or an emergency or time sensitive matter that wants to be introduced by any members, I'm just going to look for a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mayor West, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.